Chip Delk anyways.
You're who?
Chip Delk.
I know you're windows and I see you.
Get out of the block.
Hi, you're here. Welcome. Arthur not here today. You could say he better be. I did a lot of reading last night.
Unfortunate timing.
See, I think I read everything except this one. You're getting all comfortable now, huh? Six thirty.
Six three, we'll get started with planning meeting of January sixteenth. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Can we make sure mics are on if you guys are speaking? And then the podium mic too, if folks go up there. So today we have our planning commission meeting of January sixteenth, 2024. In addition to that, we're going to start with a public hearing around special use approval for Humbug Two and our seasonal RV park. Do we want to go through roll call first?
Sure. Baker? Ilk?
Yes, here.
Cox?
Here.
Crizo?
Here.
Hutchinson?
Here.
Mendoza back?
Here.
Hyatt?
Here.
Upholzer?
Wood?
Here.
Okay, first I'm going to turn it over to Arthur to kind of explain how we got to where we're at with the special use approval. And then I'll probably turn it over to Humbug Two, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Great.
Can we excuse the absent members?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we have a motion to excuse absent members? Thank you.
Motion to excuse.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And tonight we're starting off the meeting with a public public hearing for special approval. So just to give a little bit of background, the zoning ordinance has uses that are approved within the district permitted by right. And then there is uses that are permitted with with special approval, which is a little bit higher standard of review. As long as the applicant is able to meet the the review standards that are within the zoning ordinance and not to have any deleterious impacts upon neighboring properties or the potential for development, the planning commission can add conditions to that approval. But it, the idea is that the zoning ordinance lays out the specific requirements. One of those requirements is notification to the neighboring residents. So everyone within three hundred feet of a special use hearing will receive and would receive a notice over fifteen days in advance of the public hearing. So that's to make sure that the property owners and residents within within the immediate vicinity of this special use are notified. So that's why I think some of you, because this is a little bit bigger crowd than we normally get for our planning commission meetings, is the is that you would have received a notice in the mail. The other requirement also is that there has to be a notice in the newspaper. So maybe you actually saw it in the newspaper as well. So with that, there would be a public, there's a public hearing. You're to come to the mic. You have a time to be heard, to give your opinion, your concerns, questions. During a public hearing, there is not any real back and forth. It's where you are to be heard in your questions and concerns. Then during the discussion and the applicant can, after the public hearing, could address issues of that. And then the planning commission will have some discussion amongst themselves. They're the deliberative body that would make this decision. So with that, does that give us a good sense of the starting point for this evening?
Are there any specifics around this site in regards to construction or feedback or anything before we open up to the public hearing?
There is, so there's a couple of reviews that occur. One of the reviews that takes place is a planning review where we look at the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Your zoning ordinance is literally very specific to what is allowed on specific properties and regulations. And that's kind of the basis of property control regulations in the state. So you have the, so those regulations would be reviewed and a report is then presented to the planning commission, how they comply and not comply with those requirements. And then there is a secondary review that is also done by the city engineer to review those issues that are available. We do have representatives from the developer and their engineer. They are going to be having the special approval hearing this evening. But the site plan review approval, they've requested to have withdrawn because there are outstanding issues with the city engineer that won't be, that haven't been addressed yet. So the the request is that we will have the hearing. You've been noticed. You all have been asked to come and made an effort to come. So we wanted to make sure that the special approval public hearing is still held. The planning commission may choose to to approve it contingent this evening, the special approval, or they may request to hold that until the site plan comes forward. Is that near what you were requesting?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah?
Thank you.
I think next we'll go to the developer side of this to kind of go over and cover the plans.
Good evening. My name is Michael Brock. I'm with Hennessy Engineers on behalf of the Gibraltar Marine Group tonight. I'd like to just talk briefly about about the plan and what they would like to do. The plan calls for, I guess, twenty-five leased spaces at Humbug Two.
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit? Is the mic turned on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, lights on. These leased spaces would be for seasonal RVs. They would be able to lease the space from from May to October. After October, the the leased spaces would, I guess, revert back to the primary use of the boat storage yard. These spaces would have full hookups with water, sewer, and electricity. These, the tenants would would need to lease the entire space for the for the duration of the of the summer. They would not be able to sublet, I guess, to anybody else. They would, they would have that space for the entire summer. The RVs would need to be a minimum of twenty-five feet long. And they'd be, I guess, targeting mostly people that kind of retirees, you know, that they spend, I guess, kind of like snowbirds. Spend the winter months in the, I guess, southern regions of the US and like to come up and spend the winter months. I'm sorry, the the summer months here on the water. Yeah, the their leasing office, actually, they get calls constantly about this kind of a of a space. And so it kind of looks like there may be an upward trend of this type of this type of development. There have been between fifteen and twenty slips removed from Humbug Two. So that would be not a huge increase in in water usage or anything like that. These leases or tenants wouldn't necessarily be on site a hundred percent of the time. You know, they could pack up and move their RV if they want to go on a trip, say they go to the U.P. and stuff like that, so. But they would be required to have that space one hundred percent of the time. So nobody else could occupy it. The the pads and utilities are reinstalled to get a jump start on the on this coming season if this would be to to be approved. Inspections still need to be completed by the city. And this development still needs to be, I guess, permitted by the county and state of Michigan. So I did just receive these review letters recently. So I didn't have a whole lot of time to go through the the plans and update them and get them back to you in time. So I guess that's kind of why we want to wait on the site plan at this time and just concentrate on the special land use. So other than that, I can take any questions.
Do you plan to have boats and trailers there where they get docks usage?
They would have a dock, an optional dock available to them. So if they wanted to purchase the 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 site for their RV, they could also lease out a boat slip.
Well, it's not together.
Right.
But you got parking space for the trailers and all that. They would leave their trailer there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's ample ample area for trailer parking. This type of use would complement businesses around the area. I could, I could see them renting space in the newly constructed constructed self-storage units, you know, to keep keep belongings, you know, for for the probably for the winter while they're south, you know. So I think it would, it would complement the area.
What about pets, dogs? Are they allowed?
I haven't really discussed it, but I don't think.
We did a little bit, I think, a couple of meetings ago, if anybody remembers. We did discuss, from what I remember, the pet, there would be small pets that would be leashed.
Oh, all pets would need to be leashed, yeah, for sure.
Potentially adding like a dog run or a dog, an area where the dogs could do whatever they need to do so that it's not all over the place.
Gotcha.
But really, that's up to the property owner to manage.
Yeah.
But it was discussed.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
For sure.
There were some questions that I got around permanent or portable fire pits. Is that something?
We haven't really discussed it, but I I wouldn't see a portable fire pit being a huge issue, you know. If you have your RV, you want to sit out there on your patio, you know, maybe have a little fire.
It could be an issue, though, if it's if there aren't any rules. That's what I'm thinking we're talking about.
Yeah, we're still yet to, I guess, develop a lease agreement. And those kind of items would be detailed specifically in that lease agreement.
Yeah, because fires, I think even within our city ordinances, they have to be contained.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, they would need to be, it would need to be a portable, like, contained unit, not just a pile of rocks or something sitting out.
What percentage of usable space will you be taking up? Because I'd say you got five or six acres, but you got the storage rack and store. You got sun seekers, you got driveways. What percentage of your open space will be utilized by this?
The the concrete pads in the gravel storage area, they are, they calculate to be about half an acre is what it is.
All twenty-five or a half acre?
Yes. Yep, the concrete pads total a half an acre of concrete.
Which leads to how much, what percentage of the property is utilized then with this new addition?
I didn't really calculate that, but you know, there's a twenty-four to twenty-six foot wide, I guess, roadway space, you know, in between them. Just a gravel, where they're going to park boats in the in the wintertime. But I mean, I would say another quarter acre, maybe, you know, for the for the roadway.
So that'd be overall percentage of approximately what percentage is utilized?
Yeah, it'd be very small, but I didn't calculate that.
Okay.
What about room for, say, visitors? People that know, say, you have a camp, you have a trailer there and you have visitors come over, parking?
Yeah, there's, so the the concrete pad would would be sufficient for the RV and a vehicle, their own personal vehicle. So in the event that they. Yes, in the in the event that they did have visitors, they could, there's ample room between the units that they could pull a pull a car in.
Yeah, because the one thing I think that we don't want to run into is parking issues where you've got, where there isn't enough room. And you've got people just parking anywhere, you know, to walk over.
And that that's one of the reasons why why this is kind of situated where it is on the property, because the waterfront is going to be utilized for, you know, people using their boats. And that area in the rear doesn't get used at all during the summer. So maybe for a special event, it's sun seekers. But even then, that does, that it just doesn't fill up, you know. So you have a bunch of vacant land sitting there all summer, you know, paying taxes on it. And I'd like to at least try to recapture some of that.
Arthur's got a bunch of stuff here about site plan review requirements.
Let's have the public hearing first.
Okay.
And then.
All right.
The public hearings, because you said at six thirty, so let's have a public hearing. We wanted to give the public the information, and then we can go into discussion.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now is the opportunity for folks from the public or City of Gibraltar to step up to the podium, state your address and name and.
Les Armstrong, I live across the street from the Humbug Two, thirteen nine twenty-six Waters Way and the condos. We just wanted to make sure that the sewer system was sewer line, not a pump-out system. That was one concern. And number two, we just didn't want it to turn out like Downriver Campground in South Rockwood. So, but it's seasonal, it sounds like, and there are sewer lines. Okay.
That was our concern.
Wayne Brandon, three zero four nine zero, South Gibraltar. I'd like to know what it's even doing here with no permits pulled, no anything pulled in advance. Nothing came to planning before, and this stuff's already built. These people should be turned into the state and the licensing division because this isn't the first time they've done stuff without permits. And I just don't know why this is being done.
Yeah, I'm I'm not aware of permits not being pulled, does anyone?
They got a stop work order on it.
Yep.
After they finish the work. So nothing was brought to planning. Everything's done the wrong way. Most people, they'd have them tear the stuff out and redo it again because you don't know what they did in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Pat Dennison, live at two eight four one five North Gibraltar Road, right next to the marina. I see a lot of stuff going on just before this happens. About these golf carts coming in here, people drunk, peeing right in the road. I'm standing out in my yard watching this stuff. These people on these these parks things you guys are doing, no permits. Took me two years to get a garage. Get my permits and stuff. I live right there, thirty by thirty. I got the biggest pole barn in the state right next to me. They came to me, asked me, is all right? You know, can we build this without any problem? I said, no problem. But this here, they come in here and they start. Twenty-seven bays with ten, fifteen yards of concrete in every one. You tell me, where's the ordinance and where's the ordinance guy at? Cement trucks, you can't hide a cement truck in this building. These things are out there. They were working. They should have never put a shovel in until they got the permits to go ahead from the state, all that variance, all that stuff. That's a lower area on that end of the thing because I live there. I know the water. These people, I don't know how they got away with it, you know. It's like, where's this ordinance inspector guy? I like to talk to this guy because, you know, what I had to go through to get this little garage, and these people walk in here. These people own that, they got bars out in on Goddard and that. They know you got to go by the book. You know you got to get permits. You got to do everything right by the book. Gibraltar can't let this happen ever again because if you do it one time, they're just going to continue to grow and keep doing this stuff. You're not going to catch them. You know what? It's, I've been here my whole life. And when my dad was on the council, they could do that. They could get away with it back then. My brother was in on the council and mayor and all that. They started going by the book pretty good. And this happened on my brother's term, but it was, he he didn't want to run for mayor the last time because it was so messed up. He just did it to straighten the city out. I don't know how you're going to persuade anybody to be for this park because they're going to be partying in there. You can't tell me these people are going to bring their trailer down here and not sit in there and party at night. You just can't do it because of people like in the sun seekers. When they're done, they come to that stop sign right in front of my house. They sit there, party for two more hours because they got no place to party. They're going to get accepted right into that that trailer park, people. You watch. I just want to know how this thing, the construction, went that far without somebody stepping in and stopping it. They kept working. After there was red tag, it kept working. So you guys can't let this happen again. You know, it just can't happen again. This is like, this is two thousand twenty-four, you know? This is not, this is not the roaring eighteen hundreds or, you know, you gotta, you gotta modernize, you gotta get it together because it's going to just, it's going to be like a virus. So I don't know. You just, they didn't ever come to me. When they put that shovel in, I should have had a notice what they were doing before they took the first shovel full out. I got nothing. And believe me, I would have said something then. I've been holding back, and I was going, this gentleman back here said exactly what I wanted to say, but I just thought I'd yell a little louder, so.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Yeah, questions that need to be answered.
Jason McGuire, three zero four one seven Worth. For the record, the city came out, stopped work order, multiple tickets, multiple fees, multiple fines, went in front of a judge and had to pay a lot of fees. So that's how that happened. It was my 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 fault one hundred percent. Went ahead without permits, and I got penalized for it. So everybody knows what's going on. I asked the city of Trenton prior. They had called the city administrator and asked if I could have a permit for boat pads only. At that time, they said that's not my intended use, so they would not give me the permit. So as Wayne in the back said, and this gentleman said, hundred percent, I took it upon myself and did what I did over there. And the fees, the permits, everything will be, whatever the city needs me to do on my end will be taken care of to make sure that everything was done properly. And like I said, I was ticketed, stopped work order, paid the fees, paid the fines, and went in front of the judge, so, and took care of everything. So that's where that's at. So it wasn't the city didn't do nothing. The city stopped work and gave me tickets. Well, it is what it is, like I said. I mean.
You didn't know.
Paid the fees, paid the fines.
Yeah. You didn't know.
How do we know it's all done right? How do we know it's all done right underground? That's that's why they have inspections for.
Hold on one sec, hold on one sec. Let's keep the public comment going and come back.
So it's private, right? So you're right, there is inspections. If if it is not properly installed, is the city going to fix it?
I don't know. You shouldn't have put it in.
It's a private line. I did not touch the city sewer. We did not touch the city.
But it was a building there with an open sewer.
Can you address me and then we'll, so that we're not doing the discussion? And then we'll take discussion after. Go ahead.
So, yeah, so it's a private line. We tied into the existing line, it's tied into the existing sewer. We did not touch the city sewer. So if if the line number one, if it's improperly installed, which is not, we can camera it, we can do whatever we need for the city's end to make sure they're they're satisfied.
At our, at our price, or are you going to pay for all that?
I pay for all that.
To the chair, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So, yeah, I would pay for all that. What I'm saying is that, let's say I hired a shoddy contractor and they screwed the line up and everything, nothing flows through it. The recourse comes back on me, which I would be digging it back up again to put it in right. So the city has, obviously, there's no liability to the city. We didn't touch the city sewer. We didn't touch anything to do with the city. City water main, the city sewer, we did not touch none of that. So the existing line coming in is the line that we touched, which is a private line, which is our line that we're responsible for.
But there was a prior building there that you had. There was a basement with a sewer line. We don't know what you did with it, you know? I mean, you got to look at it, our, our.
Hundred percent. So I guess my question is, it's on, so it's on my property, so, right. So whoever took that building down in the past obviously didn't do it right. So when we hit it, we ended up taking the rest of the building out, and there was no sewer to it. The sewer that we used was a.
Understood there was a sewer line there.
Is there any other comment on, let's finish this, and then we'll get to discussion. Do we have any other public comment or folks that want to step up with concerns or feedback around the proposed site plan review? Or, I'm sorry, special use? Any other residents? All right, we'll.
I have, I have one that I received electronically to read. This is Robert Mulnar, three zero zero eight one Point Drive. I write this letter as a resident as well as the owner of GBY, the neighboring business to Humbug Marina. Please accept this letter on the record showing support for the approval of the ancillary RV use at Humbug Two. Eight years ago, nearly every single building in the C-three district was in a state of neglect. Much hard work has gone into the revitalization of the properties in this district. This revitalization was the cornerstone of increasing property values and thereby tax revenues to perform a higher level of city services for the community. This revitalization has not been easy, and it has not been cheap.
Sorry.
In the C-three Marina District, a significant portion of our business is seasonal, but we have expenses twelve months out of the year. It is imperative that we find alternative revenue methods in order to be attractive and competitive for our customers, responsible stewards of the environment, and gainful employers. If we do not find ways to bring in additional revenue, we will struggle to be competitive and attractive to our customers and our community. And ultimately, a state of neglect is what we can look forward to, and the home values and tax revenue reduction will eventually follow. I urge you to approve the ancillary RV use at Humbug Two. Respectfully submitted, Robert S. Mulnar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we had one more document that was shared today. Woody, can you cover that?
Well, I'm going to tell you I'm not a professional reader. Well, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not a professional reader.
That's okay.
I took the small bus to school. All right, there's a planning commission meeting tonight to discuss the RV park at Humbug Two. Our concern is centered around the sanitary system and the water system. Let's mention the sanitary system first. As it stands right now, there are twenty-five sites with twenty-five six-inch leads going into one six-inch main lead from the main building of the yacht club. There were no manholes, et cetera. Currently, there are six stand pipes that allow the airflow, sanitary exhaust fumes, so the system will assist the system to drain and exhaust. More importantly, there is no means for measures to calculate the sanitary usage going into the city's sanitary system. In other words, anybody that comes into the park with an eighty-gallon tank load of sanitary waste can dump, and there's no metering of that dump into our system. Likewise, the twenty-five sites that would have twenty-five large first-class RV vehicles dumping into our system have no means to measure the waste being dumped. And remember, the RV itself contained with freshwater system, so it's not one gallon of city water to one gallon of sewage. There is no way to measure this sewage being released, released as it stands now. In essence, what needs to happen, and what is found in most well-designed parks, is the sanitary system for twenty-five sites is dumped into a metering pit. Sewage macaroning and pump chamber before being released into the sanitary system. That way, all sewage is metered and recorded for billing. Likewise, the question that should be asked is when the marina dumps the collected sewage from all boats that are moored there, where do they release that sewage into the city system and how it is measured? As a resident's water usage and sanitary building, billing is recorded by this method. One unit of water, one unit of sanitary cost. At a marina, how is done is the equation is the same as residential, but marina, the RV park as it stands right now is unbalanced because water usage won't equal it. Disposit sewage gallons into the city sanitary system unless the sewage first enters a metering pit before being released into the city sanitary line. The other issues with the site plan should be how it's graded, since there are no catch basins, and it appears that everything is being drained off, off the problem property and onto existing property. Neighbors, in essence, the site should be graded to self-contained specifically to the catch basins, basins within the property instead of being graded as it exists, how the dumped into the existing property lines. Private citizen.
Just respond to that real quick. Why don't we close the public hearing first?
Any other comments on the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we're gonna move into. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
We don't need a motion. So we're closed on the public hearing, we gotta move into the.
Regular agenda.
Yeah, we gotta move into our regular agenda and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Do we have any?
Public comment on matters on the agenda.
Do we have any public comment on matters on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. And it was mentioned that there's some changes to the site plan review on the engineering side. So I would suggest that we need a motion to remove number two under section A of unfinished business.
Number two?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, do a second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okey doke. Next, we'll move on to approval of the previous meeting minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Support?
Back it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We don't have any acknowledged correspondence, and do we have any public comment on matters not on the agenda? Okay. And we will move into unfinished business, section A, number one, which is special, special use approval of the Humbug Two seasonal RV park. So this is where we have discussion around whether or not the planning commission, based on the feedback that we receive, wants to approve or deny the special use at Humbug Two, as discussed.
I feel like we're not finished hearing out some people before, before I can move forward with that.
Right, and invite the applicant back up to answer some of the questions.
There were some of the questions.
Where did he go?
Do you wanna come back up now and?
No, the other guy.
So I guess I have some answers towards this, is that the sewage and the water is what we're talking about, right?
It could be any of them, let's start with that one, yes. That'll be perfect.
So the sewage, our pump-out system at Humbug, Humbug One, is, the sewage is pumped into a five-hundred-gallon container, then we pay AC/DC to come out and pump that out. So none of our sewage from any of our boats go into the sewer system.
Okay, that's about the boats.
Right, okay, so then now we're talking how an RV discharges sewage opposed to water. So now on the sewage part of it, every dock that uses water, I pay sewage on. So every time someone is hosing their boat down, the water's going into the lake, I'm paying sewage on that water throughout the whole marina. It wasn't like that prior to me purchasing it, but now. So if you take our water bills, when I, obviously, there's more people there, they were about forty-six hundred dollars a year. Now they're about sixteen thousand because of the sewage. It's been added, sewage is more than water. So when you take an RV and they hook up to water and they hook up to sewer, every time they crack their faucet, I'm being charged sewage.
Right.
And then every time they flush their toilet, then the sewage is getting covered by the water. So I guess, I guess my point is, I think I'm well paying, I don't, I don't, I don't know how the sewage, I would assume it works something like a house, when you flush it, it goes down, but any rate, I don't know for sure. But I would say by the site of four hundred and eighty boat wells, I think they got the sewer coverage.
Is it water?
Yeah, I think the sewer is more than covered on that. So I mean, obviously, I'm a resident, I pay the high water bills like everybody else does, no one likes it, but it, I mean, it is what it is. But I think at the marina side of it, when you're hosing a boat down and people are, and then the hose is running in the water, and you're getting charged sewage on it.
Yeah.
And it's not even being, and then, and then, like I said, the pump-out system, the head keys used to put it in that portable thing and take it over to, and dump it in the sewer.
Yeah.
So that now we have a pump-out system that gets pumped into a holding tank, and then I pay a company to come out and remove it.
Yeah.
So.
Once bitten, twice shy.
It, right, so that's just kinda clarification on the sewage.
Will you have some type of pump-out system for the trailers?
No, so RVs would be going into a sewer, into the sewer system.
And it sounded like from this, it just sounded like there was a concern that their holding tanks would be going into.
Oh yeah, I think a holding tank would be used when you're not, when you don't have hookups, I think. I think if you have a hookup.
Yeah, that just sounded like they were concerned about, you know, excess amount.
Right, I think if you have a holding tank on there, and, and I guess if you were going somewhere, then you have to dump it somewhere. I mean, these people, yeah, I don't, these will be direct hookups.
Goes into the sewer system?
Right.
If I might, the, there is gonna be a meeting with the city engineer and, and Hennessy, their designer, after this, to address these kind of things that aren't really related to land use issues. So, you know, but, but we did wanna make.
We get it covered.
Right, right, and so we wanna make, you know, the planning commission's focus is the land use side of the equation. We need to let the city engineer really handle that component, and they will, they'll, there will be a meeting, I don't, it hasn't been scheduled yet, but there will be a meeting within the next couple of weeks, I'm assuming.
For sure.
To address these, these technical, you know.
And I apologize, we were fully prepared to come forward and to give you guys all the paperwork, but like I said, we just got the paperwork on Thursday from the.
As long as they touch the base on it, you know, and then everybody knows.
Any other questions for Jason while he's up? Okey doke, thank you.
Thank you.
So as Arthur mentioned, it's on us now to decide if we approve or deny the use of the land essentially for.
Can't deny.
Well, I'm sorry, if we approve.
Approve, approve, or in which conditions you want to add to that.
Yes, correct, sorry.
Yeah, but if we do anything else, he's already got the stuff in there, I mean, you know. You know what I mean?
Yeah, right.
But I still think, but I don't think that that should control what you want to see the applicant.
So he just wants to get the land usage and all the other stuff will come later?
Correct, the site plan will come, well, is gonna come back because we have these outstanding issues. So this today is the special approval for the RV use. Yes, correct. And so there, it would be appropriate if there was some considerations that you wanted to include, like, like the dog, like provision of a, of a dog area, a dog.
There's all kinds of parking issues and stuff, too.
And, and, and if you want to have, have him identify a visitor parking area, because the, it does sound, the pads are large enough for the app, for the RV owner to have space, they're quite generous. But if there's a visitor coming or a couple of visitors coming, where are they gonna park? And maybe it would be that an area gets signed for them, and, you know, is, so that might be another condition as well.
So then if them people got boats, then there're gonna be more people coming in, so, you know. So I used to boat, too, you know, so you ain't gotta tell me about it.
With the twenty-five pads that are poured, I mean, was that set up by a guidelines, or do you just come up with a distance that you wanted to pour and put in? It seems like quite a few in a small area. Where I was looking, and I'm not a RV park guy, but they said, rule of thumb is ten to fifteen per acre, and you got twenty-five on half acre, so what, how much space? What came up with that?
The concrete itself is a half acre, so when you put all of the concrete pads together, it's a half acre. There is literally more than that, like in between the, the concrete pads and everything. And that's how we kinda set it up like this, is that, you know, the primary leased space or tenant space would be the concrete pad, and, and there's ample room in between the, the pads for visitor parking, you know, on either side of them. So just, I guess on each tenant space, there's, there's room for probably two or three vehicles.
I know you're still working on the site plan, but if parking did become, if we continued to discuss it, would there be ample space for like an overflow lot?
Yeah, I would, you know, that, over at Sunseekers, you know, there's a lot of parking over there on, on, over near there, I'm sure we could work something out where, you know, some of that could be overflow.
Can you?
I would suggest putting it on the, the south side of Sunseekers versus the north side.
One item that I had heard was the discussion of concern of noise. I think it's a very valid concern as it might be, I think planning commission may consider a posting just to reflect noise pollution here in the city. We have a nuisance ordinance for noise, maybe some signage reflecting that for patrons of the facility. We could look into that, and like I mentioned, they're kind of targeting, you know, retirees and, and snowbirds, that kinda thing go back and forth, so. I guess in my, my opinion, they probably don't make a lot of noise, but that's not to say that it's a hundred percent out of the question.
And also, they're gonna sign the lease agreement like our boating, our boaters do. So they're gonna be, the noise ordinance is spelled out in black and white, and obviously, it's gonna be enforced like it is at the restaurant and as it is anywhere else. I mean, if there's noise there and the police, I mean, in our lease, our lease agreement, it spells out in black and white what the rules are, what you can, what you can't do, and then all dogs have to be on a leash, but it might not be a bad idea for having a place for dogs, you know, to run and use the bathroom, so it's definitely something we can definitely consider. But yeah, everything will be spelled out, just like in a birding lease on, on the boats.
Because I think today, they'd all walk out to parking lot and be on the sidewalk and in the grass, you know, in everybody's front yard.
Yeah. No, that is a good idea, but the dog walk.
And as, as you guys can probably tell, and I think the neighbors can tell from the property is, and the gentleman that I think had left is, we're trying, we're cleaning the place up. The stuff, the boats that are there now, they're paying rent, and not necessarily do we wanna have them there, but it's income. They're kinda something, I mean, we had when we took it over, there was probably thirty dilapidated boats that were on the property, now I think we're down to probably five, six. But again, like as Mike expressed, that property is vacant all summer long. So, you know, when you're, as Mr. Mulnar said, when you're putting, putting revenue, I mean, all, you know, the taxes and everything else, you're just trying to create revenue over there, so we're storing boats, because that's what it's permitted for, and some of them aren't the best looking. So I think it's, by doing this, by having the certain class RVs, the certain sizes, obviously no tents, no camp, you know, just, we're not, we don't wanna deal with riffraff neither, we want it to come in just like a boat, let's stay here for the mon, for the, for the season, and you're done. Come in and then you leave. So I mean, I think it's, I don't think that, I mean, for the city's, for the city's point of view, I don't know what, I don't know what negative impact it would have.
I think a couple items that we covered, and you mentioned, you mentioned them, one, I think two suggestions might be like designated parking overflow, because in between, do you know what the, the space is in between the pads out?
Yeah, probably, it's, it's around ten feet.
Okay, so it'd be tight for like a car in between.
And then that's supposed to be like a little green belt area. So, yeah, so yeah, so having a dedicated parking, like a visitor parking, but like in our, in our birding leases, it says that you're only allowed one car per boat. And that doesn't happen, but, because obviously, you're trying to limit, if you're coming down the boat, let's pick you up logo, instead of having eight people, you know, show up and you got four cars there, because obviously parking could be an issue.
Yeah, okay, so designated parking overflow, and then pot waste or run area considerations?
Absolutely.
So if we get those in, okay. And I believe because tonight it's special use approval, based on the other conditions, if we add those in. Yes, and those would have to be added in particular to the site plan, that you'd come back.
You know, it has a privacy fence on two sides, with the side that runs on the north side like patch yard, could we ask for a privacy fence across that, so he's not staring at the campground?
I think it's a green, are we gonna have like a, some kind of a green belt there?
You wanna privacy fence along there, Pat?
These items, are more site plan related items, or?
Yeah, site plan items.
Privacy fence through there?
Okay, so.
It's gotten better with the paving.
They also stopped that, too. Yeah, I have permission for that.
But it's terrible.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Screaming off the hose with just mud, it's just, it's bad.
Yeah.
It's road health, but if they're gonna put that parking lot like by my fence?
Yeah.
I really appreciate asphalt there. That would, that wouldn't calm a lot of things down, you know.
That or, that and a privacy fence, that's up to you.
It goes over the privacy.
Yeah.
It just goes over, you watch the car go, and it's like.
Then the white fence turns black.
Yes.
Do you come up to the mic, please?
So I live on three, at 30659 Island Drive, okay, so I moved into Gibraltar about five years ago, all right, and the things that you guys are doing in Gibraltar is great. I think it's a great thing for the community. I'm actually a new business owner in the community, which I'm going to come up here for some science. That's one of the reasons why I want to put things in this city, right, is the development of the city. Look at where JP's was, look at now Captain Jim's, now I just bought Jim's galley, right? We want to develop it, put more, more money in the community, this is the way to do it, right, so this is my opinion.
Thank you.
I don't think I've heard enough.
How do we feel about the addition of the, the privacy fence could be a condition of the?
Site review.
No, it could be a condition of land use as well.
It could.
That would be the north.
Privacy fence, but the, neighbor indicated the dust is still coming over the privacy fence.
So, pay parking lot.
Sounds like a good idea, I saw trees, there was a sighting for trees that needed to be added, I don't know if the trees helped the dust, trees and a privacy fence, trees filled with some of the dust.
Yeah.
What kind of trees?
Lots of money to make money.
I think some other conditions that have been discussed, so as folks were coming up and talking, we covered some of these, obviously noise, I know we have Sunseekers there, I think the concern is that, I don't know what your policy, the rental policy is.
He's right.
It's for timing, it follows, it has to follow ordinance anyways, right, which I'm sure it does. We talked about the dogs and pets.
Fire pits.
Excuse me?
Fire pits.
Yeah, the fire pits, I think is, we would have to adhere to our current ordinance. Sewage, we discussed, I think, I, I think I do for neighboring properties, like the privacy fence idea as a condition. I think the three to discuss that we need to kind of add on would be designated overflow, which we discussed, the pet waste or run area, and then some sort of neighboring privacy fence for adjacent properties.
Well, it doesn't have to be too high to make it work, you know, I mean, there, there comes 20 foot high all the way through, and put a six foot privacy fence.
It doesn't do any value. It's like kissing your sister.
Yeah.
I think that's all it can go.
I think the max we could go, I think the max we can go is eight, I don't know that that's going to solve a dust problem if people are driving in the dirt, however, they install blacktop and things like that, so I don't know that.
The trees would catch the dust better. Greenery.
So three conditions to add would be pri, privacy fence within our ordinance on adjacent neighboring properties, designated overflow parking, and pet waste or run area.
So would they be on the GBY side, too?
What?
The Gibraltar Booyard side.
GBY.
I, I would, I think it's up to the commission, but I think that there's a resident, you know, there's a resident on the north side, and on the south side, it's another commercial use.
Correct, but the resident is saying he does not want a privacy fence.
Yeah, I defer to what he wants.
That's what I'm, that's why I'm confused, like.
You just want to keep the dust down.
Yeah, I didn't want the dust.
Can they, can that, I don't know, we're close to the water here, but can you put that sulfate stuff down to keep the dust, you know how they use to oil the roads and? Huh? Yeah, Kelson and Chloride.
Right, and that's what we were doing, that's what we were doing prior to asphalt.
Did that help the dust?
It helped, yeah, and there were people who were complaining that it gets on your tires and you track it down the street.
It's always something.
For every action, there's a reaction.
Right, I mean, would not be opposed.
What about like a green belt for, like, abromities or something like that?
Well, we had a tree and we cut the tree down, because.
Oh, because I would think those catch the dust better than that.
Leaks all over the boats and everything.
Well, yeah, the tree that we cut down by the property over there, that was a nuisance for both of us.
Yeah. Death row.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with designated overflow.
That's what I used to call death row.
So that's what we're hoping to get rid of.
You're right, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so I think we're going to end with, it sounds like designated overflow parking, and I agree, the other adjacent property is commercial, so it doesn't really make sense to, and then the pet waste or run area.
Okay.
Those are the two adds. Any other, any comments, discussion? Yeah, looking for a motion for special, special use approval for Humbug 2 seasonal park. With said conditions of designated overflow parking and pet waste or run area.
Do we got to get into validating the sewer, that's all site plan?
Site plan.
Well, and that's site plan and engineering, so that will be.
Okay.
Okay, I think I want to make a motion to approve the special use for this with said conditions that we just talked about.
Support.
I'm sorry, who said the support? Who supported?
Thank you.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Special use carries.
Special use carries. Next discussion is, excuse me, yeah, new business is sign review for Cottage Inn Pizza at 29110 North Gibraltar Road.
This should be easy.
Yeah.
I'm Greg Carr.
Nothing casted in stone, but the road and they tearing that up every day.
I'm the contractor for the Universal, for the Cottage Inn Pizza, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
I only want to have the pole sign, you're leaving the same sign, you're just changing the signage on it?
Correct.
You're not changing.
It'll match the sign on the building.
Well, the sign that's there is going to be reskinned, from what I understand?
Correct.
Is it going to be nautical?
I think the, the sign proposal, so, are.
Is there another study that's going to run the building in addition to the pole sign?
Yes, there's more to the, do you want to discuss the size in comparison to our current ordinance?
Sure, so you all should have received a sign review as well, in the way the, the way the review, you know, a couple of things, back in 2019, the commission approved and made a recommend, recommendation to council for a, to allow wall signs for 40 square feet, which was never acted upon by council. Somehow it fell through the cracks and was never taken up during the, that was around the time that one city manager left, and another city manager came in, and that was not approved. Currently, the maximum size sign permitted is 25 square feet wall sign, and what it's proposed, the way the, the way the ordinance reads, again, please don't take, take it out on me, the way the ordinance reads is that it would be 88 square feet, because it goes across the entire length of the, it tells us to look at the entire structure of the sign, so.
In the front.
On the, on the front, so that's 20, it's shown on the sign plan as being 20, about 22 feet wide, and being four feet tall, which really gets us to that number, versus where they have shown that it's 32 square feet around the size of the sign, around the area of, that, the area of the sign itself. So the problem that we have is this kind of mix, one is the way that's shown is that there would be a sign panel across the entire top of this, of this, of the facade of the building, and then two, the overall area would exceed the, our maximum requirement. So the applicant could shrink the sign size down, the planning commission could look at thinking out, about where we should be measuring from, instead of measuring the entire facade, you know, the entire sign band, so those are the things that we identified as issues with the sign, and the, one decision that you would also have to make is we're to decide if the sign is nautical themed or not, and this has, on a, on a wall sign, the image would be sufficient with the things, there could be added things, but in the past, that has been sufficient, where a pylon sign tends to desire more, but a wall sign usually is just some imagery to comply, so there would be a decision that, yes, it complies with that, that the sign complies with that, the major issue is the sign area and how to address that.
I think they did a nice job of incorporating the lighthouses onto the sign.
Yeah, it looks good.
So if we measured from the watermark, from, on the sides of both light, both lighthouses, what would we come up with? Because this, if you think about it, this blue, if they painted their building blue, they could do that.
Or if the sign panel on those sides was white, or they just, there is a possibility to narrow the sign down to just the area within the size of the, within the size of the lighthouses on both sides, so I think that there's options available to this, to the applicant and the sign manufacturer.
Do we know how far, how much over it is if we measure from the water to the water, on what do you currently have?
The lighthouses, I, 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 I would say it comes probably down by about a third, just guessing, just guessing, which would be down to about 60 square feet instead of the 88.
The entire building is 28, this is probably 20. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, so it's the question of definition of the outside dimensions that's, that we're debating here? Because I got my figures from Steve in the building department, who went to the sign ordinance and was reading me what was allowed, and he says 35, he says anything under 35 he'd accept, was his understanding of the ordinance to me, of illuminated sign, illuminated signs could be 35 or less, so I came up with 32, and the lighthouses were a part of the building's painting facade, just to, to be clear, this area I show blue is a pre-existing soffit that's on the building, it's nothing we're installing.
So that is not, so where is the, where, where's the sign panel, where's the sign measuring from?
The actual sign measurements are exactly 10 foot by 3.2 feet, or 32 square feet for the cottage inn.
Oh, just vinyl that's being added to that aluminum, or that steel that's there?
Yeah, these, these lighthouses, right, would just be a flat piece of artwork.
Lighthouses are vinyl, and then the cottage inn portion is a.
Building, like you're talking about painting it, I plan on painting it, but I can't because of the weather, right, so it will be painted blue, I just.
Right, yeah, you might, I made a note on their LED lighted channel letters on Raceway, and then A is as soon as possible, the exterior could be painted with a nautical theme and colors, and that's where the blue came in.
Okay, so the sign itself is literally?
32 square feet.
32.
So that's all you're putting up?
Yes.
And then the vinyl lighthouse is better, vinyl.
Kind of be, it's attached to the, to the facade, right?
Yeah.
That makes, that.
There's actually like three signs, then.
That I think makes us a lot.
The two lighthouses and the cottage inn sign.
If you consider the vinyl lighthouse as a sign. It's like painting. We're going to paint it, and then actually, I think it would look better, more attractable if it's a vinyl, like you.
I think this looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Actually, it looks like an awning.
Yeah, I just illustrated it a solid color, because.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign here, I think these guys have done a great job, this is pretty straightforward.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one more question, do we know, was there any, any additional repairs to the building for this sign, electrical or physical or anything like that?
There's a pre-existing circuit for the sign there already on premise, we'll, we'll use that, the reason I show that as a solid blue area is because right now, the colors on that soffit are mismatched, and they're going to clean that up and make that all one nice solid color, so that'll be painted.
And he does have to pull a building permit to install, so the electrical will be addressed.
Oh, I'll go through the building department.
Right, I've already applied for that.
So our building person has already done the inspection and looked, not yet? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate, everyone's help.
Yep.
Next we have election, election for chairperson.
I second it.
Third.
Fourth.
Yeah, all in favor? Say aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Harry.
Congratulations.
Thanks, that was very quick.
Thanks for stepping up, they didn't give you a chance to say no.
Let's say anybody else wanted it, nobody else wanted it, right?
Section C, election for vice chairperson.
Vice chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jeff Upholzer as vice chair.
There you go, I second it.
Moved and supported, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I think that we have commissioner forum.
This year.
Commissioner forum, we, one quick question. We got some questions on social media around why, why were we approving and you can't, you know, stop the special use, the proposed use of special use is following all of the current ordinances that we have in place, so our objective today was to come up with additional conditions that we felt might be necessary to meet the needs of the city, outside of that, they're following everything that, that we expect currently, so I hope that answers the questions.
You haven't followed anything, we're supposed to bring everything before you, but at a time, not after.
That.
You didn't come to planning before, you didn't do anything before.
Which is why he was fined and stopped the work.
He wasn't fined when he did his seawalls and stuff, when you couldn't build a bridge out here, the whole city was, the whole city was, for months, he built it without the proper permits and everything, didn't have the facilities to build it, he did nothing.
Let's hold, so we, we made the statements, the builder covered that earlier, he paid his fines, do we have anything else for commissioner forum? Looking for a. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourned.
Good evening. I would like to start off by welcoming Mr. Jim Bilk to the planning commission and DDA. Greatly appreciate it. Yes, thank you. And Mr. Markham, if you're listening, thank you for your service to date. And Jim, we're really excited. I think you're going to do a phenomenal job on this planning commission and DDA. So just really appreciate you for doing that. Second thing is, I could not be any more excited about your decisions around chair and vice chair. Bill, I just want to thank you for being a leader for this forum and for getting us on track with a constructive, solution-based discussion each and every time that you've been sitting in that chair. And thank you to our vice chair for all the work that you will do collectively. The third thing I want to do is just say happy 2024 and I'm really looking forward to working together. So with that being said, I'd like to call the downtown development authority meeting in order. And Katie, can we please call roll?
Schumate.
Here.
Baker. Bilk. Cox.
Yes.
Frisone. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mendoza Back.
Here.
Payet.
Here.
Upholzer. Wood.
Here.
Fantastic. Mr. Baker is not in attendance. So is there a motion to excuse our absent member, Mr. Baker?
Motion to excuse.
Is there support?
Second.
Any discussion? Great. All in favor of excusing Mr. Baker, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up to public comment for our downtown development authority meeting. Is there any public comment? Great. I'd like to pursue a motion to approve the agenda sitting in front of you. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Motion to, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. In front of you in your packet, you will see first item is approval of our previous meeting minutes, the DDA minutes of twelve nineteen twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Great. Also in front of you today, tremendous thanks to our finance director and treasurer, but at the end of the day, you're looking at item A, which is DDA budget as of one twelve twenty twenty-four. This is serving as an acknowledgement of correspondence. I'd be looking today for a motion to receive and file the DDA budget as of one twelve twenty twenty-four.
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Yep, I don't have one item as pertains to the DDA budget. If members would like to take a look at line item two four eight nine seven five oh one, water main line expansion, you can see our bond is in that for the three point three million. This number will drastically change next meeting as our first issuance payment is coming due at the sum of two point one four four million on it. Currently, it just had our issuance cost in there and our to-date cost. So we're going to be paying the contractor for the work that they've done. So I'm just going to throw that out there as that number will be changing very rapidly.
That'll drop to like one something or something, based on what you said?
Yep. So we have a hundred and thirty in there. So yep, it'll, it'll be just over a million dollars in there at that point. Good news is we're looking at a cost savings of about two hundred thousand at this time on the project.
Thank you so much. Cost savings will be tremendous for potential other allocations to the city of Gibraltar. So Michael, thank you so much for the update.
Absolutely. It will come back before this board for the other ideas for projects as it relates to the remainder of the fund. Again, we're going to post that through our bond council to, to do so, which will be encompassing of more items within the downtown development authority plan.
I highly encourage that to be a topic for discussion amongst you all in a future meeting. Any other discussion on that item? So we have a motion, we have a second. Michael, thank you so much for the color behind the numbers you're looking at in front of you. And with that, let's call roll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business for you this evening. Next item is new business. I want to thank our parks and recreation director, Tammy. Tammy is unable to be here this evening. So I am your messenger for this evening's topic, which is Fourth of July carnival. I know that we all appreciate the Fourth of July festivities, the importance that has to the city of Gibraltar. And I wanted to just be a messenger for you in relaying some information for which you all will be responsible for deciding our path ahead. Unfortunately, and I learned this today even in phone calls and the background provided by Tammy, out of all the companies that are doing amusement parks, they've taken a hit. And that's a very general statement other than to say several of them have gone out of business. And I was walked through the numbers there. Unfortunately, the organization that previously did our carnivals is no longer available to do our carnival for twenty twenty-four Fourth of July. So with that being said, I commend Tammy. Tammy's been out meeting with individuals, making phone calls and playing on connections. Most recently went to a carnival convention or trade show. I hope I got that branding correct. But at the end of the day, she's been working hard because I think we can all appreciate the importance of the Fourth of July festivities, the role the amusement park or carnival activities plays in that festivities, in addition to the fireworks which you all have already reviewed and approved in a previous meeting. And so when we think about our current state, we now have a organization we previously worked with that is unavailable or unable to fulfill those duties. And Tammy is, and again, I'm the messenger here, provided us with one potential solution. But I want to make sure you have all the information that I have today. And I'd like to have any discussion or, or questions answered. So number one, this organization is called Family Fund Time and time is spelled with a Y. Tammy has met with this organization, including their leader, Bob, and another individual named Dalton. And the information I have for you to consider today is as follows. We are able to source eight to twelve pieces of amusement park equipment. To me, that literally translates to rides and games and food. And it's going to be an upfront cost to the city of Gibraltar of eight thousand dollars. One of the questions that I had was, let's get more information on said amusement park equipment. What are the rides? How does it relate to previous years' experiences? And I was told that information would be something that would be worked on with Tammy and relevant stakeholders as the data approaches. But this is a company that's been doing this for quite some time and has a lot of options to consider. I browsed the website myself. As far as the other question I had for them was, what about your insurance coverage? The insurance coverage, they carry a two million dollar insurance policy for this application. And there's nuances that our experts can guide us on around how we put ourselves on that certificate to make sure we're covered. But the short story is I was assured that the insurance is already included and that we are covered from an insurance liability perspective. The third thing I said was, well, what are you going to do with our electricity and our water and our sewage? For which I was informed that they have generators for, for all their electricity usage, with the exception of they would, could explore the living spaces for the carnival employees for the duration of their stay, could potentially plug into our city electric. Again, that's something for everybody to consider and decide upon. But they have generators to operate the whole show, is what I was told. And as far as arrival and departure dates, they would arrive the Monday of that week. And to give you an exact date, I'm pulling up my calendar as we speak here. So that Monday would be, looks like the first of July. They would provide, the amusement park activities would be fully set up and available to our public the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So that would be the fourth, fifth, and sixth. So there'd be three days of amusement park activities and then they would dismantle and be out on Sunday for their next commitment, which I don't recall what city or location that was. So I want to give you that flavor of kind of what I know today. Now, the last thing I'll say is the eight thousand dollars upfront cost, if the, if the amusement activities, food, games exceed twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue, for every dollar that we exceed twenty-five K over those three days, we get twenty-five percent of that money. So as an example, if the amusement park did thirty K, that five K incremental twelve fifty would go back to the city of Gibraltar. Now I ask the obvious question that you might all be thinking, which is, well, how much do these amusement parks traditionally make? And I was told over twenty-five K, but in the range of twenty-five to fifty K was a number that was given to me. Now, I'm not stating that that's fact and I don't have any evidence to prove that. That's hearsay based on discussions with professionals in this line, including Bob and others that work in these organizations. So, so I want us to all be level set on the fact that it could be less than twenty-five K, it could be twenty-five K, it could be fifty K. If there's over twenty-five K amount, we get twenty-five percent of that back.
The guy that went out of business, could you talk to him and see what he typically would take?
I was told twenty-five K or more. So that's the information I have for you today. As somebody who's really cherished the Fourth of July festivities, I think the amusement element of that has been a critical piece of the overall festivities. So I'm just going to be very honest with you in that. I think, I think we do an amazing job as a city and hats off to Tammy and everybody involved, because I think we've done a great job between the fireworks and the festivities. I think I cherish that and I've cherished that my whole life. So I hope everybody feels the same way subjectively, emotionally on that. I talked to our finance director today. Our finance director has informed me that we do have the funds available to consider if you so choose, the eight thousand dollar upfront expense, keeping in mind that we could get some of that money back. I'm a big believer in thoroughness and getting all the information available. That's what I have in front of you today. I don't have any more information, but I thought it'd be a great way to open the dialogue, to ask if you have any questions or comments or reactions. And I just would like to, just the, the individuals in front of me, I'd like to get some directional guidance from you all. Like, is this something we want to pursue? Our options seem slim and we'll need to make a decision pretty quickly on this one.
Seems like something we'd want to pursue. Did they happen to say what other cities they worked with before?
I don't have that information today, but that could be a good follow-up question, which is other cities they've worked with and the experience with them.
Can you restate the, how long, like what's the plan? Three days of?
It'd be three days. So it'd be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, as currently proposed, with the arrivals for setup on Monday. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would presumably be, Tuesday, Wednesday would probably be the heaviest lift on setup, I would assume. And then departure, they would leave, pack up and leave on Sunday because they have a commitment following week.
Were they requiring at least three days to hit the twenty-five K?
No, I think some of the initial discussions were two days was the, was the kind of ideal target, but there were, Bob, the owner that I spoke with today, to get information for you all, said, if I'm already there and I'm already making a trip out there, then I think it'd be awesome to do a Saturday as well, if the city's open to it, for which case I could get out on Sunday for my next commitment. And again, I can't recall where they're headed. So it's a great, a great question, other city experiences. What other reactions, questions, comments do we have?
What's, when do we have to offer this commitment?
When I asked that question at a closing, he's, he said yesterday. And obviously, that was a joking comment, but I, I think they're, they're pretty tight on these bookings. You can imagine anybody that's got Fourth of July commitments is probably already locked up. So we found one that is not, has a commitment on Monday. So I don't want to make a right, I want to make a right decision, not a rushed decision, but we are in a rushed scenario, just to be very transparent.
You got two figures here. One's eight thousand, the other one's nine thousand.
I spoke with Bob and we landed at eight thousand.
So if I look at the budget, it looks like we spent five thousand last year. Is that accurate? So this would be like a three thousand increase?
It's a really good point. I don't want to misspeak because I was not a part of the prior discussions. Michael probably could keep us as honest as possible on that. One thing I do want to, Michael can answer the budget question from last year. Number one. Number two, the alternative, right? So let's just talk about it. Let's say planning says, no, we don't want to incur it, or we don't want to pursue it. I want us to be very transparent. It's either nothing or it's maybe like bouncy houses or something of that nature. Bouncy houses are still going to cost us money as well. Just want to all be clear and will not offer the same robust Fourth of July celebrations that we've all been accustomed to. So I just want, you all have options. I want to make sure you're aware of those. Bouncy houses would be your number two. Michael, can you give any color on the prior?
Yep. So it was our general city costs for Fourth of July festivities was about five thousand dollars last year. The contribution maple leaf that we've had for years prior has been a, a no cost upfront and maple leaf kept what they recovered from the event itself. So if they made thirty-five thousand, the city didn't see a dime of that, but at the same time, we didn't, we were not charged for having them here.
So that five thousand will still be there on top of this eight, unless we get money back from them.
It's a great point.
This would be, this would be a, a line item expense to enter into a to enter into a contract.
Have you ever gotten any money back?
I believe prior to myself, there was a different arrangement with the maple leaf contractor, but I can't speak to the prior administration.
Just say that one more time. So the five thousand exists because it covers the other costs. This is in addition to, so thirteen thousand if we go with Bob and Dalton. I think there's two things, two questions. If we don't do it, we're going to end up with bouncy houses. Growing up here, like be honest, it's like my favorite holiday. Personally speaking.
I tend to agree.
As you get older, probably you trans, you know, you go more towards the other tent. However, for kids, I think the, you know, the rides are important. The only thing, the reason I brought up the three days is there were some like weird policing issues last year. So the question is, do we have to lock in three days or could we say Thursday on the fourth and Friday and then clean up Saturday? That gets us out of like the weekend of it? And do the full?
We don't want to clean up on Saturday.
I, I think that you'd want the third day to even generate the revenue to possibly return back.
That was why I brought it up. So that's the decision, right? Oh, and you get the offset if it rains the other days.
Right. Is the whole Fourth of July event, those three days or just the carnival?
Good question.
Another great question. So tell me more about that. What, what's, what's the other question?
Carnival went, uh,
Like someday, some years, it's carnival only on Thursday.
It went for two days before.
The whole shebang on Thursday.
So that's like beer tent, all the other stuff.
These are Tammy questions.
Yeah. So, so that's another question to ask for Tammy, which is how does that, how does the duration of the carnival relate to the other activities going on, Katie, if I heard you correctly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Say that again.
How does the duration of the amusement activities relate to the other activities that are planned?
Yeah.
We can follow up with Tammy in that, absolutely.
And again, shed a little bit more light on it.
I think the concern is that we're being told we have to kind of make a decision fairly quickly. We don't have a meeting for another month as a DDA. Is that duration of time allowed? Or are we looking?
I mean, I, Katie, you can keep me honest here because I'm still learning. Is it, is it appropriate if I call the owner while I'm sitting here at the mic and I can maybe get answers to the questions, which is number one, what other cities you've served? I'm not saying that will give us a real-time feedback, but will give us direction on other cities and then ask if you have the time to wait till the next meeting? Does anybody have any issue with that? I'm going to call Bob.
You're the chair.
You're the chair.
If I may, while you're going there. Again, letting a little bit more light to, to cost as it relates. There's multiple things that do you want to do the Fourth of July, including the application for the porticoans, the chairs, tables, other vendors, entertainment, as it might be, that is encompassed with that original five thousand.
Bob. Garrett Schumate, mayor here in Gibraltar. How are you? Garrett Schumate, mayor of Gibraltar. We spoke earlier today about Gibraltar Carnival. Bob, I just want to be very transparent. You are now sitting in a downtown development authority meeting. I'm at the podium. We had a couple of questions for you. Do you have a minute for us?
Two. I'm driving two.
All right. Number one, can you give us any cities in Michigan or neighbors that you've worked with for amusement activities in the past?
How about the Wayne County Forage Fair? Debbie.
Wayne County. Wayne County Forage Fair, okay.
Yep.
Any others that you'd like to share?
Oh, Mungar Potato Festival, Ron. I can get you their numbers, mayor.
That, that would be, that'd be great if you could take us to follow up. I think they were just looking to see, you know, if you've done business in the area, which I think the answer is yes. So thank you. Thank you, Bob. The second thing is we're a, we're a do it right, not rushed group of individuals here in the city, but we recognize your, your time is precious and you, as you expressed, we need a decision pretty quickly. Do you have a hard deadline you could share with me right now on like when you would need a decision? A concrete decision about Fourth of July?
Oh, boy, oh, boy. I'm kind of flexible for Tammy, but
Are we talking days? Are we talking weeks? Are we talking over a month?
Next meeting?
Oh, I'd like to know the next fifteen days, mayor. Would that be possible?
Next fifteen days? And you have no flexibility on that? We're asking because
I got flexibility. I'm just, we're trying to solidify our routing. So, you know.
The only transparent reason I'm asking is because planning commission and DDA meets once a month. Katie, can you keep me honest on the next meeting date?
February twentieth.
So the next meeting date is February twentieth?
That's fine.
Is that, is that okay with you? Is that, is that okay with you?
Yep, that's fine.
And we can commit to taking action on the 20th, if that's okay with you? Bob, I really appreciate the patience. We just want to make sure we're doing the process right.
I can work with that. That's...
So Bob, if you can keep us penciled in and...
Yeah, keep Tammy or keep you guys penciled in, yeah. No, I won't, I won't fill the date. I'm stressed out to begin with, so I'm good with that.
I think you're hearing a general favorability on the concept of having amusement activities in Gibraltar. We just want to get into the details and perhaps be... So that's, we just need some time to do that, because it's the first time we're here today for the commission. So you have my commitment. I will personally call you, or Tammy will call you on the 20th, okay?
Okay, super.
Appreciate you, Bob.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll be there.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Drive safe.
Appreciate it.
Bye. Okay.
You got to remember, too, that Fourth of July is Thursday night. It's not a weekend. It goes kind of slow. It was slow last year.
Yeah, so it's a good, another good point in context of the duration, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday will get you some weekend tail. Well, the good news is, you have till next meeting. So any other questions I can take back besides recommendations or, I should say, neighboring community service?
Does the vendor advertise?
I'm sorry?
Does the vendor advertise?
They have a website and whatnot, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I mean, for our event.
Advertising.
Oh, oh, yeah. That's a good point. So we can, we can ask that and kind of see what the coordination is.
Drive the revenue.
Katie leads our communication, so she can keep us honest there on some of the options we have.
What features are we actually looking for, for which rides, and how many fireworks, or what?
You all have already evaluated or made decisions, I think, on the firework investment for this year. So that's already taken care of. This would just be the amusement rides and the games or food that kind of coincide with that.
And for how many days?
How many rides in three days, right?
I was told eight to 12 pieces of equipment, but yeah, that would be... And then, and then as we get closer, this Planning, DDA, and Tammy could evaluate the rides. Like, they have, like, kid rides and adult rides and all sorts of options. So I'm sure that would be a discussion you'd have tactically with, with Bob and Tammy, if so chosen. Any other questions I can take? So I'm hearing general support for pursuance of an amusement park activity and devils in the details. So we'll get the details for you, and you can make a more informed decision as you so choose.
It's the only game in town, right?
Seems to be the only option we have, and I just want to make sure we don't lose that option unless Planning, Commission feels that we should go in a different direction. Thanks to Bob.
I guess that's the discussion, right? If they're the only one, like, you've called around, there's no other options.
It'd be Tammy, right?
Yeah, it just feels better.
The other one, the Maple Leaf or whatever we had last year, they went out of business. They're done.
Yeah, I think I'm the messenger here, but I trust Tammy in that she went to the carnival and, like, put a lot of effort out, and she knows a lot of contacts. So I was told that this is the only option you all have.
Yeah, this is her agenda item. She, she put this together for you guys to consider tonight.
The only thing I'd say is, is anything going to change in the next four, like, are we going to come back to them and say no?
Probably not.
Probably not. I'd make a motion to approve Family Fun Time Amusements for the Fourth of July 2024 as our amusement vendor.
Support.
For 8,000. For 8,000.
For $8,000.
For 8,000 investment. I hear it, a motion, I hear it, support. Any discussion?
I guess you can call him and tell him.
Maybe you don't have to do it. You can do it later.
I will let, I will wait for the resolution, and I will let Tammy inform Bob.
Text him a thumbs up picture.
I appreciate any other discussion items. I still think it's important to get this other information, and that might help support our planning. So I will go ahead and do that with Tammy to make sure we get references and experiences that have gone well. And then, to the extent appropriate, you all will have eyes on the process for the execution, obviously with Tammy being our leader of that chip. All right. We have a motion, we have support. Any other discussion, any other comments, questions we should raise?
Is this a one-day, $8,000 one-day event?
No, three days.
Up to three days is the option, which would then relate to the revenue considerations and the 25% we would get back over 25.
So it's going to be open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday?
Bob said he's open to that. Leave that to Tammy and Bob and you all to weigh in on that more specifically.
One, one more question. How do we track the revenue side of it? How do we know when he reaches the $25,000 threshold?
There you go.
They have, they would have a contractual obligation to disclose revenue. So I don't, I don't know how that works, but I definitely, obviously, a very important question. So let, maybe, maybe what would be fair, if you all are open to it, I might make a suggestion in the discussion, is a conditional approval or motion, conditional based on clarity of some of these questions, unless you all feel that's not necessary, that's more for your information only.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I'll leave it to you.
With the opportunity to acquire some revenue ourselves, the question of advertising to bring in...
Yeah.
The market.
So, so marketing was one.
Something we want to consider.
So I heard on the marketing, there's the references. So I would say that we could speak with some other parties. Bob will send that. So assuming everything checks out, what the references would be another condition?
And another question. I know it's very traditional to have fireworks on the Fourth of July, but really to draw people in on the weekend, we might get a better draw on the weekend.
Yep.
It's the one, the fireworks on the weekend.
Of assurances.
Fireworks are...
You'd have to check with all the local... I think it states in the charter, it's the Fourth of July one day.
Yeah.
Fireworks have already been approved.
Yeah, fireworks have already been approved. This would be a focus on just the amusement activities. Jim, did you have something to add?
Well, that's good. Well, the neighboring communities, Metro Parks, Trentons, we try not to have them all on the same day, so. Right. But we have been locked Fourth of July.
So as it stands...
Always been the Fourth, ever since I've been here.
If I may, I was kind of recapping here. As it stands, yes, the Fourth of July fireworks are on the Fourth. Their backup day is the Fifth, as their contractual obligation. Second, I'm hearing for some conditional considerations, as it might be. Again, from what I'm hearing, public safety element of it as to the duration of the event. Let's kind of get maybe public safeties weigh in on that. I think that would be very important here for the city.
I like it.
As well as some sort of letter of assurance. We've done that with other contracts in the past, under their contractual obligation to disclose any revenue in the excess of $25,000.
I think that's a great, so I would say, public safety considerations, as you highlighted, and letter of assurance on revenue. The third thing I would add would be that the references check out.
There you go.
To make sure we're not entering a agreement.
They got till the 20th of February.
Well, you're making a motion to, yeah, conditionally on those, so, and then we'll make sure we get back to Bob if those conditions are met. Fair?
Yep.
Can we read the motion, please, so it's very clear?
Repeat your motion, please.
Motion to conditionally approve Family Fun Time as the vendor for the Fourth of July festivities for $8,000 with the conditions that they meet our public safety needs, our letter of assurance, the contractual obligations, and clarity on revenue from the three-day event, and a reference list.
Yeah.
Great. I think that's smart. Thank you. Okay, so we have a new motion in front of you with those revisions. Is there a second for that motion? Yeah, we have support. Any further discussion on the topic? Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Tammy, if you're listening, we will work with you to make sure those conditions are met and that you are able to get back to Bob accordingly. Thank you, Planning and DDA. Next topic, DDA Director's Report.
As it stands, I have no additional report other than the information I shared with the Water Main here this evening and that the, we'll be coming back to with the bomb posting for supplemental items under the bond.
Thank you. And next item is going to be tabled in referred items, which there is none this evening. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the DDA meeting.
I'll second that motion.
You'll second that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Happy 24. Thank you all so much for your service and have a great night.
Thank you.